Hey, good evening. How you all doing? We're gonna start our meeting. We're gonna ask Pastor Anthony King, will you come and give us our prayer followed by Mr. Harris with our pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for this day, for this is a day that you have made. And Father God, we thank you for this government body, the City Council, and we ask for your grace for wisdom. We ask for your grace of strength as we govern together to work together to make this city as you call it to be. Father, we thank you for this opportunity. We declare that the blessing of God is in this government body today in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Will you remain standing, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, good to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
Will you call Admiral, please?
Mayor McClendon.
Present.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Suda Junior. Counselor Bruce. Counselor Cat.
Here.
Counselor Crum.
Here.
Counselor Harris.
Here.
Counselor Holt.
Here.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Here.
Counselor Muhammad. Counselor Monday.
Here.
Counselor Murray. And Counselor Whelis.
Here.
I talked with Dr. Bruce. He would not be here today. He had to take a medical situation with his wife, so he won't be here today. Uh, we have eight out of ten pres- hold on, nine out of ten, nine out of ten present, I'm sorry. We do have a quorum. I'm gonna ask you all, when you all table, I'd be to open up how to have a park improvement.
So moved.
Second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It's table. Uh, did I have any corrections to the minutes?
Uh, I guess for clarification, table and definitely just table to the next meeting.
Uh, I wanna table it indefinitely. Was there any corrections to our minutes?
Motion approved, it's submitted, second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, those minutes are approved. We had no old business. Ms. Muhammad?
Right, I would like to make a motion that we read our one by title only.
Can I get a second?
She may want to read the whole thing.
If you wanna be here a while.
Can I get a second?
I did a second.
All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? I miss to the turn.
Thank you. Resolution certifying the amounts of liens imposed on certain properties for grass cutting, cleaning, litter, debris, and tree limbs, et cetera, contracted by the City of West Memphis pursuant to ordinance number thirteen eighty-five.
Thank you. The motion, the seconds approved.
So moved.
Second.
End discussion? Hearing none? All pay by?
Aye.
Oppose? It passes. Ms. Clerk, will you get that resolution and number, please?
Resolution number two-two-seven-seven.
Two-two-seven-six.
Seven.
Two-two-seven-six.
Six.
Yeah, two-two-seven-seven.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Uh, what we're gonna do, Ms. Patricia, get with them, get their address in there. We're looking to what they're talking about. I had no permission request. We had no committee re- uh, Ms. Muhammad, did you have the minutes for the far or?
Uh, Councilman Tracy Katz, that he's going to report.
Okay. I had no appointments. I do got a couple of presentations. First of all, I got a proclamation I need to read. On behalf of Judge Victor Hill, uh, we lost Victor Hill earlier this week. Uh, he was a judge right here in Leo, right here in West Memphis. So many of you all may know Judge Victor Hill. And we have a proclamation that reads, whereas the executive branches of the City of West Memphis would like to express its deepest sympathy to the Judge Victor Hill family on the loss of their loved one. Whereas Division Six Judge on the Second Circuit Court in Arkansas, he held seats since two thousand and was elected in two thousand and four and two thousand and ten. His last term ended in two thousand and sixteen. A selfish public servant, Judge Hill was an example of his dedication to protect and serve his constituents daily despite dangerous circumstances. Whereas he was self-taught, saxophone player, and played other music instruments as well. He was also dedicated to doing community service projects whereby he purchased instruments and donated them to inspiring young artists. Judge Hill was a believer in education, criminal law, and an advocate for justice to prevail. He obtained a bachelor's in education and a law degree from the University of Arkansas in Little Rock. Judge Hill remained an example for those who wish and serve and were are grateful for his life and actions and memories. Whereas Judge Hill's life as well as his death, he had the determination to serve his fellow man. His bravery and action will continue to inspire the people of Arkansas, West Memphis, Creighton County, making it worthy of remembrance. Now therefore, I, Marco McClendon, Mayor of the City of West Memphis of Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, January of the seventh, twenty-twenty-three, a day of rest for Judge Victor Hill. And urge all the citizens of West Memphis to give special recognition to Judge Hill's family and ask that they all read comfort in John fourteen-one and three. Thank you, Judge Hill. Uh, Judge Tony Alexander will take this to the family. Secondly, and then I will turn it over to the Far Department, so Chief, you can get ready to come. Matter of fact, can you come up? Cause I may need you a little bit in this as well. I truly wanna take this time to thank so many people that helped over the last couple of days during this tragedy that we had. I wanna thank our West Memphis Police Department, all of you guys, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, West Memphis Fire Department, the ladies and men of that department as well. Uh, Creighton County Search and Rescue, uh, West Memphis Tourism, which A and P for opening up their doors to help bring these individuals in that needed refuge. First Baptist Church here in our community, Kelly's Chicken, Papa John's, AP Store Management, Walmart, Citizens, uh, Frank Bale of the Citizens of West Memphis, Family Dollar, just, um, Chick-fil-A, I'm sorry. Uh, the Creighton County Warriors who volunteered, Pizza Pro, A-one towing, Clark Towing for their donations, Al Thomas Records, Paradise Motors, and all those who, uh, contribute to helping these individuals during this time. We had an unfortunate, uh, storm that came through and it dropped a large amount of water here in our city. Many peoples affected, uh. We had a lot of streets that were flooded, but we did have a lot of residents all over the city that had experienced flooding within their homes. And they needed help, and we doing everything possible that we can. We thank the, um, Red Cross. We also wanna thank our West Memphis School District, cause they was willing to open their doors as well to help some of these individuals, also, uh, Creighton County, uh, Emergency Management. So everyone, I just wanna thank everyone for doing what they done, because it's because of you guys. You all, we see it every day. Sometimes people may take it lightly, but you guys put your lives on the line. You serve this whole community. Our Utilities Department, we was out there in water, I haven't heard our GM, he was out there with us, going in water, looking and seeing what we can do. The, uh, Utilities Department did a great job. Uh, Mr. O'Leary Sloane, the Street Department was out at four o'clock in the morning dealing with pumps, pinning up barricades. They done everything possible that we can do. And I want everyone to know once again, it's not that we didn't do what we can. It's just sometime when God prevails, he prevails. Not only did West Memphis flood, Marion flooded, parts of Memphis flooded, all up and down this Delta region flooded. And there was nothing that we could do about it, but we done everything that we can to help the people, and we still are doing what we can to help any individual that may need some help, whether it's going through the Red Cross or something our Outreach Department can assist in. We're gonna continue doing it to help the people, because I think I got so many phone calls this office did, and I'm sure council people got calls. I wanna thank Ms. Muhammad for reaching out. I wanna thank, uh, Dr. Bruce who came down. Uh, Counselor McCann who called everyone who was involved and just doing what they can, reaching out to see what they can do to help. Counselor Monday, I remember called from you as well, so I just wanna thank you all, but we done everything we can. I want everyone to know that the city did not drop the ball. It was just that God came in with that storm. And sometime when he's working, you gotta let him work. You know, and it's simple as that, and we done everything that we can to help him. And, um, like I said, my GM Todd Pusen came in and placed a, um, a pump over in the Riverbean Apartments and in less than the next day, all that water was gone. And we learned some things about the apartment that we need to give with them and address on that. But I think everyone did what they need to do, and no one then said, well, hey, I'm not gonna do it. Everyone got wet. Everyone got in the building and that what they can do, whatever, help them, transport, rescue, the whole nine yards. So I just wanna say, on behalf of myself and the Mayor and the City Council, thank you guys for what you all done. Thank you. Chief, before you get into your thing, I wanna Counselor McCune ask a question. Then, uh, I think more since you laid up the, uh, the rescue, uh, program that we had yesterday, can you kinda tell him about if someone needs some help now, where agents just may be there to help?
Okay, uh, yes, sir. Uh, Ms. Mr. Crum, what we actually had to do yesterday was, uh, we had to put together a tabletop meeting. Uh, we had multiple agents come together to create some kind of way to mitigate the problem. One of the things that we did was figure out a place where they can have some evacuation for refuge. Uh, right now, the Red Cross staff is coming to the city. You can call one-eight-hundred Red Cross and they will be assistance going forward to anybody that's in need of the flooding.
Chief, one of the questions that the Mayor and I, or one of the items we discussed was this post, host. And you, you talking about the rescue and, and temporary housing, you know, was the aftermath of this high water. Uh, and, uh, the Mayor's gonna see what we can do to get our sanitation department over.
Okay.
To, cause these people, it was hard enough. They, they had a lot of, uh, debris that just flooded down the streets, that stuff. But I'll let the Mayor take it from there.
Yeah, if we have any, uh, if any resident having the thing, place on the side and, uh, definitely I make sure our sanitation department go out and pick it up. I may even give them four hours on the weekends to do something as well, just to help. Because it was a tragedy for our community, so they have anything like that, and sanitation thing for us picking up, we get that picked up as well.
And also there, there, uh, there is a residence that's in Mr. Whelis and Mr. Crum's ward that's been an ongoing problem for years and years. Of course, I came in a little late for pre-council meeting. I don't know if anything was discussed about setting up a time and a place to meet uh, with those citizens to see what can be done to help them, because I don't think it's just a big dilute of uh, rain that we had on the other night. I believe that it's just an ongoing problem with that particular area whenever there is rain, that, that you all talk any about perhaps getting a meeting with those citizens coming to City Hall, just for a special meeting to talk to, uh, council members, Todd, um, the city engineers and everybody to see if there's something we can do, cause it's a very lowland area and it's just a terrible problem over there. Did we say anything about that?
Well, no, we didn't, but definitely we set up a time, then we get everyone together, what we could call discuss.
Right, I, I think they deserve to be heard. I don't know how much we can do to help them as far as buying out properties and things of that nature, but they deserve to be heard, because they are taxpayers, they are voters, they're citizens of the City of West Memphis, and they deserve to be heard with all of our minds together. Perhaps we can come up with something to help that particular neighborhood.
Okay, okay.
We'll get together on the time.
Sure, we get with the Counselor McCann, we just informing about, uh, getting with FEMA has a program that possibly we may be able to use that. We may, that without the process, I think we would use to buy the houses in Eastwood and Auburn, so that, that may, there had to be some approved through them, so can't guarantee them, but that's just the only way we can.
So we'll, we'll get together, uh, this is your ward, yours and Mr. Whelis's.
It's actually, it's actually all in the city.
I know, but this, this particular area that we discussed.
Right, yeah, this particular area we discussed. I talked to the Mayor about getting that area cleaned up and straightened up and getting all that done, but I did not get to the point to set up a meeting, because, um, it's, it's, it's gonna take, it's the whole city that needs to get together, not just.
Yeah.
Not just for three, but.
Yeah, like I said, it's a lot, it's a lot of areas, so definitely it may be good when you get the meeting together, just invite everyone from the entire city that wanna come out, because I want everyone to understand that West Memphis is a flat land. You know, you think about Memphis and the bluff, water can run off of you. Open that bottle of water, pour it on the flat surface. It just gonna stand there, and that's what we go through until we can get it in the bios and get them pumped out to our basins. You know, that's just some of the things that we did, but definitely, we'll definitely love to get with all of us.
How many pumps do we have, Mayor? I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
Let me get tired of that.
How many pumps do we have in the city?
Yeah, you can do mine.
Uh, as far as on along the ditch banks, I'm not as familiar with those, but I know the ones on Rice Street are running. The one behind Falk Elementary is running along the ditch bank, and I know the one out off of, what's the name of the road? Airport Road? Is it Airport Road still out that way, or has it changed names? The one back there behind the church off Airport Road is running. We have two at the flood pond that is running, but they are running off of, we, I brought in a generator with a transformer and we've gonna incur that cost, but they're running.
So there's five altogether that you know of right now?
The three on the, that are along the ditches.
Right, yeah.
Those are the three I'm aware of. I think there's some others, but I am not, th- those are typically maintained by Public Works. The flood pond is the ones we typically, that we've been dealing with the building. Uh, that is no longer there, but we have kinda, as we'll say, we'll just, we've hotwired those directly. So where they can run.
Can, uh, I know that we've got two out at the, what I call the holding pond out on the.
That's all we have out there.
Port Road.
That's right.
But could you expand on the investment that we're fixing, or we're making to improve this situation?
Well, as y'all know, last year y'all approved a, the new building that is being constructed as we speak. I didn't expect during this time that we'd have a spring rain in the middle of the winter. Uh, as the Mayor said, Mother Nature decided to decide differently. Uh, but we have those two, but as y'all know, y'all pre-approved one point one million dollars to get that back up and running, okay? So that will get us to where we have three operational. We also have invested four hundred thousand dollars. One has been pulled. There's a total of four large pumps out there, okay? One of those have been pulled and is at the shop being replaced back to, and refurbished back to basically new.
So the end result will be that we're gonna have four pumps out at the holding pond.
Correct, up and operational. And you have invested to date probably roughly two point five million dollars, I would say, in stuff we've tried to do over cleaning, getting it back up, and I can foresee that we needing to do more there. But when you look at, if you say, well, let's just replace it, you, you don't wanna see that number.
God, let me ask you something. What is, uh, what would you say would be the starting date on finishing everything up?
Well, again, when you say finishing everything up, I don't think there is a finish date on anything. Uh, I can tell you, you know, y'all, y'all have helped. We've done a bond issue through the utilities where we're investing thirty million. That, that's not an end date. We need to be investing in this infrastructure every year and getting it back and starting to do that long term. The same thing with your drainage system. The drainage system was put in when the city was built. There is not an end date. I think you need to start coming up and starting to allocate funds for maintaining your ditches and making sure the drainage system and coming up with a long-range plan to allocating those funds for that. And, you know, and I know Tori's down there cringing right now, I mean, but I think that is a plan that needs to happen, cause there is not an end date. If you wanna know, when do I think the building will be up, I'm hoping within sixty days, we will have a building up and motor control in there and operating pumps, and I hope within probably those same sixty days, I'll have that other pump back to us and installed. Uh, again, the building, they dug the footings, the footings are been poured. They're currently right now digging a big trench between the building footings to the existing structure, where they're gonna put a big electrical conduit, uh, duct bank, so that we can run the wires from the building, which is now up on the hill over to where the structure is. So I'm very, I'm being very optimistic that I'm hoping before we get into our spring rains, that we'll be, that facility be up. But since we've had to bring this equipment in, I think it'd be very prudent of us just to leave the equipment there, because a lot of that cost is transportation of that equipment from wherever we rented it from to our facility and de-mobbing. So we'll have a monthly cost, but I think for the purposes of us to be safe, I'd just leave it here for those days until that facility is up.
Do you, do you foresee, I know we've talked about unusual weather patterns, um, but a lot of it, you know, I'm not putting you on the spot here.
Don't ask me no weather.
No, no, no.
Cause the weathermen didn't tell me we're gonna have five inches of rain the night before.
Well, I, I know, but, but, but weather is weather.
That's right.
Okay, uh, and we're supposed to have a little bit of rain coming up this weekend.
That's correct.
You know, well, no, nobody knows how much is gonna fall.
I agree.
But the one of the biggest, one of the biggest concerns that I had that was asked of me when, and the Mayor was talking about everybody getting phone calls, uh, was, was preparation, being prepared to do everything we can do. And that, one of that is to make sure that all this equipment is in place and operational.
Correct.
Okay, um, and, and one thing popped up in my mind when we were talking, when I was talking about this with some of the, uh, citizens that in, in Ward Three, was that, um, even if this equipment's in place, someone's got to take the responsibility of making sure that it's maintained.
Correct.
Because prior administration, I, I don't think they maintained those pumps out at that, that holding pond.
And I think we are doing everything we can to make sure that equipment down at the flood pond is maintained. As y'all know, and I think some of y'all remember this, we actually brought, the Rice pump was down. We actually brought a diver in. At middle of last year, he went underwater and they found some stuff. That's why that, at first, we thought we were going to have to pull that one and replace it, but we found out that there was tires up, it had sucked tires up in it, I think is what it was, and some other debris was up in there keeping it from running. So the equipment was, I think, in operational and was able to be run. Honestly, again, I think this caught everybody by surprise, because as I watched the ten o'clock news and everything I was seeing is watch out for tornadoes and severe weather. I don't think anybody thought about five inches of rain in a matter of six hours. And that, and so. But that's where I come in. Cause I can tell you when, like, when the cold weather and everybody was saying the cold weather, I prepared my guys, hey, we need to be ready, and we started putting ourselves on, literally coming in every four hours. We can say, yes, we're prepared, but we're not there twenty-four hours having people all the time. So we also have to be, based on the information we're provided, is what determines if our actions. And I can tell you, if somebody would've told me, hey, you're about to have five inches of rain, I think our response would've been differently than, our initial response would've been differently than what it was after the fact.
And, and that's all I was getting to, is preparation, making sure you had your equipment and everything ready to go and somebody maintaining it, and so you know it's reliable.
I agree.
Well, one of the bests is best, but we've had, I think, was that holding pond on Westwood Acre. Cause I drove through there, and I don't think I saw any, any damage, any homes through there.
That, that was key. You, you, you absolutely correct. That was key, because a lot of people had water on the streets. They didn't really have it in their house. And I know it inconvenience for it being in the street, you can't go where you wanna go, but making sure it's not in the house, that's good. And, and preparations, like, when we talk about the bio, when I got with Todd, we saw a cleanup bio starting from Thirty, Thirty-Six Street all the way through Badger Street, getting those things cleared out. So those, those things work, but one thing I do wanna add, I wanna commend you, because when I look around other cities, you hear utility life be out for four, five, six days. We don't have it here in West Memphis. We don't have a loss of life here and different things like that, so I don't want, you know, it's like people all on, on utility, because utility, the fire police, street, they do a great job, cause we, we have minimal damage. It just started tonight. It, it, it hurt us all, and definitely, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna, it's gonna not only need us, but it's gonna need the people in this community to help us as well.
Yeah, I know. I, I've committed Todd and his leadership and the Utility Commission many times.
And again, I know Chief Ely is ready to, but again, I think that's also, when all that stuff was going on with the severe cold, Todd wasn't out there fixing those, all those electrical issues. That was the guys that we pay that are out there, so that's who we need to commend is, those people. And that's who I, I, thank you.
Todd, is there a pumping station in, uh, Ward Five on Monroe?
I don't know. I wish Philip was here. Philip knows that stuff better than I do. I, I know about those few because of where they're located. I don't know if there's any, Mayor, you know, is there a pump over on the east side of town that moves it further?
Ms. Harris.
Thank.
That's a sewer pump stationed.
A sewer pump?
Yeah, everything moves east to west.
Yeah, I knew that, but I didn't know if there was any, like, drainage pumps that push the water from the, on the east side to the west.
Yes.
And, and let me say, why you saying, cause I, I got it, since, like I said, I have taken a whole, well, hold on a second. Majority of the people understand, but you have a small group of people that don't understand. They always say the pumps are not on. Don't you know the water have to get to a certain level before it even clicks the, the pumps on the start pushing it? Just because it start raining and, and the level is still just at two feet, I'm just throwing out, for example, the pump's not gonna come out, the pump's not gonna come out as at nine feet. I'm just throwing out numbers now. That's when it's gonna happen, so. What I'm saying, the pump's not on.
For some of y'all who remember, been around long enough for that original design, Tracy might've been. But if you remember, the Army, the, uh, not, the Corps of Engineers required a weir at the very end before the flood pond. So literally, the water has to get to a certain level in the city before it actually starts going into that pond. And that's something actually me and Ward have tried to, we've started discussing. Maybe we could reach out to the San Francisco Levy, uh, group and talk to them about being able to maybe remove that weir and put a gate there, so that when we know we have these type of events potentially coming, it could, we could raise the gate and allow that stuff to evacuate quicker from the city. It's a thought, but we would have to get the approval of, again, the Army Corps of Engineers on that, so.
The request was made before.
The request was made before to lower it two feet in order to get the water moving quicker. And the Corps denied that request. Of course, they're still working on the Grizzly Corner project. That's the reason why you have that flat gate in the southwest part of town to stop the back flow of water because all the storms happening come to us. I was asked the mayor earlier today about that flat gate. The water level seemed to be unusually high after this amount of time it lapsed. So I didn't know if that gate was been opened. If we still had the high water southwest of us, the reason why we couldn't open it in order to reduce the, the, the levels of water that we have in the ditches now. Yeah, the Corps of Engineers just somewhat, it was just what we wanted to do and how we wanted to do it, be a different problem, different solution.
I agree with that.
Does have demand, so.
Thank you. I'm gonna let Chief Ely.
Let you go ahead, go ahead.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is our second annual firefighter staff member, firefighter and crew member of the year award. A tribute to the brave men and women who have gone above and beyond the call of duty to serve this community. Each and every one of them has been at the forefront of this coronavirus pandemic. I think so often, we take for granted the sacrifice our first responders make, putting their lives on the line every day just to help keep us safe. Let's just take a moment and give them a round of applause and show them how much we appreciate them. Our firefighter of the year award goes to Captain Richard Brown. Will you step forward, please? I personally have been in several house fires with Captain Brown as my subordinate. He is a very aggressive firefighter. He is fearless. I have had the opportunity to trust him with my life. He's also been very important in our role of changing our Kelly Day cycle schedule to the forty-eight ninety-six. He played a very important part in it. And I'd just like to let him know how much I appreciate him, Captain Brown. West Memphis Fire Department, for his commitment as a company officer to train crew departments wide, as well as his performance beyond his assigned shift days to promote new firefighter tactics and build morale at his assigned station. The city and fire department of West Memphis hereby recognizes the following as West Memphis Fire Department Firefighter Year 2022 for outstanding contributions to the department. Captain Richard Brown presented this day, January the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Captain Brown. Would you like to say a few words, Captain?
Thank you, Chief Ely and the Fire Department Administration. It is an honor to receive this award. However, it would not be possible without the men and women of West Memphis Fire Department. And thank all of you for your support.
Our next award goes to, it's the firefighter of the year crew award. It's a word we put together for companies that sometimes have to go in and do valor and make lifesaving incidents. Firefighter Crew of the Year Award, recognition for valor lifesaving incident. We have the following firefighters. If you are present, please step forward. Captain Brian Benninger, Captain Allenworth, Lieutenant Taylor, firefighter Fields, firefighter Sharp, paramedic Thomas, and EMS Jewel Zukowski. Will you step forward, please? Captain Benninger, if you would step forward, please, and receive this award. You are one of the highest ranking officers on the scene at the time, and you're also an active protagonist chief on different events. I would just like to read this plaque off to you guys. It is a crew award. You all will be receiving individual awards at a later date, but I wanted to represent, send this off to you as a crew. The West Memphis Fire Department, the city fire department of West Memphis hereby recognizes the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Crew of the Year for saving of life. Captain Brian Benninger, Captain James Allenworth, Lieutenant Gary Taylor, firefighter Alan Fields, firefighter Alvin Sharp Jr., paramedic Willie Thomas, EMT Jewel Zukowski for actions taken to rescue a victim trapped in a partially submerged vehicle on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Arriving at the scene, crew found an upside down, partially submerged vehicle with a male victim trapped inside. The victim was floating with only portions of his face above the waterline to allow him to breathe. All hands were required to successfully wrench, crib, spread, and cut the vehicle, extricating the victim. The victim survived the incident and has returned to normal daily life because of the actions of this crew that responded. Presented this day, January the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, C-Shift. Captain Benninger, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'd like to thank citizens of West Memphis for trusting us with their lives, the Department, the administration for allowing us the environment to train. And this time, the training paid off. These guys right here, they worked hard and I appreciate everything they did for us that day. And I'm sure the gentleman appreciates it too. Thank you. And let's continue the winning streak.
Good job, C-Shift. Yeah, I guess we can take a picture. Come on. I guess we was gonna do everybody and we just take a picture together. That make it a little faster. Our next award, this is always the most difficult award I think I have to make is a staff member of the year award. I could make a case for each and every one of my staff members. Honestly, I think I have the best staff in the state of Arkansas. They have stood shoulder to shoulder with me in every incident that I've had to encounter. But because we only do one a year, the staff member award goes to Division Chief Chuck Brackettsey. Congratulations, Chief. Chief Brackettsey has definitely revolutionized the EMS division. I'm gonna read the plaque now for you, Chief Brackettsey. West Memphis Fire Department, for his commitment as chief of EMS to make sure the citizens of West Memphis receive the best EMS service possible. Chief Brackettsey started the year with only three paramedics. Through hard work, dedication to West Memphis Fire Department, is fully staffed with paramedics, has two new amelances that are being built at this time. The city of West Memphis Fire Department hereby recognize the following as the West Memphis Fire Department Chief of the Year 2022 for outstanding contributions to the department. Division Chief Chuck Brackettsey presented this day, January the fifth, twenty twenty-three. Congratulations, Chief Brackettsey. Would you like to say a few words, Chief?
Yeah, I just want to thank Chief Ely for, and Chief Clay for selecting me for EMS or staff member of the year. You know, like he said, it's, probably was a hard decision because I think everybody on our staff works hard. They come into work every day and give it all they can. But I just want, really want to thank our paramedics. Like he said, we started the year out with only three. The pandemic just really was hard on EMS across the nation and we felt the effects. But I just want to thank the mayor too and the city council because y'all helped provide a raise for our firefighter and paramedic that made down competitive with the other cities around this area in the mid-south. So I just want to take that opportunity to thank y'all. We couldn't have done that without y'all. So I really appreciate y'all. You know, when you receive an award, it's really not about me. It really isn't. You know, I'm a person that speaks from the heart. And I really just want to talk about these three paramedics that just stuck with the city. And they gave it all they could. And, you know, what they go through each day when they come to work. A paramedic has to make a decision like a doctor. They have so much they have to do. It's very stressful. You know, I was there for twenty-six years on the unit. And you come into work and when it's something bad, you know, have so many decisions to make. And I just think, I want to thank these three paramedics for sticking with us and just supporting me through last year. And I know one of the paramedic, two of them are not here, Michael Etash and Chris Bebault. They're off today. I want to say thank you to them for sticking around with us. But Major Lauderdale, Major Troy Lauderdale. I really appreciate you. He has given twenty-six, over twenty-six years of, of service to this city on the ambulance. Twenty-six years of service. We could not do that without you either. I mean, you were really there for me a lot during this year along with Chief Clay. You know, we talked about it a lot after hour, what can we do to bring paramedics in? And I really appreciate all you've done. I just want everybody to give him another round. Twenty-six years, I mean, he. So I just really wanted to say I appreciate y'all. We are fully staffed now. We have nine paramedics and one waiting to test. We do have two new ambulances on the way. And I'll be excited for them to get here hopefully around July. But I just want to thank, you know, all the guys out here also, you know, they helped recruit paramedics. A lot of them have recruited them from classes they go to. So it's just a team effort. It's really not about me. Just really about all, all of us pulling together and making this work. So I just really appreciate that. There are a lot of you go out and, and talk to, when y'all go to classes or at hospital or different thing to help recruit them in. I was just talking to a guy today from Forest City where I want to go next week to help test, to help keep recruiting. And he was like, you know, if I get back on the unit, I want to come to West Memphis. So there are a lot of good things that are here. And I think it come from y'all that the morale is so up here right now. And I just hope to continue that. So just really, all of y'all, I really appreciate y'all so much because getting these, these paramedics in here where we're running three units most days is just a real great achievement from where we was last year. So I really appreciate it.
And just real fast, I would just like to piggyback a little bit off of what Chief Brackettsey was saying. He made reference to how bad our EMS department had really gotten. No fault of ours, it's just something we inherited. But here's the deal, they put us there to come up with solutions. And one of the things that we did was I met with Chief Clay, I met with Chief Brackettsey on a weekly basis to put together a strategy. I'm convinced, success is never accidental. It's a strategy. And one of the strategies we did, coupled with the mayor and the city council was, we were able to raise their pay so it can be compatible to the tri-state. That was strategy number one. Strategy number two was, we went from the Kelly Day cycle. We were the only fire department in the whole state of Arkansas still using the Kelly Day cycle. We are transitioning to the forty-eight ninety-six that helped us attract paramedics further away. Not having to come to work ten days a month, only having to come five days a month. Fifty percent reduction in fuel right away. Help gave firefighters a raise, something we could do under our control without having to come to the taxpayers for a raise. That was something we deal with in the department. Thirdly, coupled with the lofty retirement that the state of Arkansas gives the firefighters and the police officers. One of the best retirements in the tri-state. They pay twenty-two point sixty-six percent into their retirement. Those things as a collaboration really helped transition and bring the fire department, paramedic department to where it is today. So I just want to say thank you to your hard work. It's already started to pay dividends. With that being said, thank you for allowing us this time. That brings our ceremony to an end. Mayor, I think we want to do a group picture with you.
Then yeah, if we get, if we are doing the more, we're doing that too. While, while we reconvene and get back together, and I mean, I do want to add something too. I want to thank the city council. And I want to thank you, Chief. I want to thank the city council because coming up very soon, we gonna have the first certified training station in the eastern part of the state of Arkansas. So thank y'all.
Thank you.
Quick question. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hudson.
Yes, sir.
Did you ever get a check from Faith International Ministry? Didn't you? That was you Faith International Ministry? Okay. What about the Eighth Street Mission? Who donated the Eighth Street Mission to? One City Boys Club, One City Boys Club in the amount of six forty-six. I asked Willis. No, Willis said he didn't. No, it isn't on the back. Oh, yeah, not the books, okay. He already took that check. But we had, we had no more announcements. We had no citizen requests. Can I get a motion to second to adjourn? Didn't want to need to add anything before we go? All the paper. All the paper?
Ah.
Opposed? There we go.